Minutes. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Tumwater City Council work session. On Valentine's Day, sorry about that. So with that, I believe we have everyone present, so we will present the role call. Uh, so I guess we'll jump right into it, John, do you want to go ahead and start with safe place update?
Sure, um, you know, as everybody here knows, we have sort of an ecosystem of human service providers who provide a variety of different aspects of services to our community when they're in need. From housing to food to programs and services for young people. But one of the, one of the really not that any of them are less important, but one of the important pieces of that uh is safe place and services to people who are experiencing domestic violence and there's been some changes over the past few years at safe place and Matthew Solomon is here as the new relatively new executive director to update us on just sort of where's what's going on at safe place and for those who haven't aren't familiar with safe place, this will be a great opportunity to sit here how they fit into that ecosystem. And uh for those who have to get an update and then there'll be an opportunity for for questions. So Matthew, thank you very much for joining us.
No, thank you for the introduction. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the city council. It's a pleasure. Um, I it started with a safe place in August of twenty-one. Have a background in nonprofit and community services for over fifteen years and both here and uh Olympia Tumwater area as well as Oregon and Washington and the Akmo Valley. Um, so I'll just start here with the presentation. I'm assuming I can just share screen.
Oh, you should be able to.
Okay. Can you see that?
Um, not yet.
Oh, okay, hold on just a minute. Oh, I see what I'm doing. Okay, can you see that?
Uh, yes, we can now. That's great.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, so safe places, the certified domestic violence and sexual assault uh response organization for the county. Um, the only one in the county. We're located downtown. Couple blocks from Olympia City Hall, but we serve the entire county. Um, we have our footprint is basically this business office that you see in front of you as well as a confidential shelter that is in the county. And undisclosed location. And safe place was formed in nineteen eighty-one. I'm not going to read through all of these bullets around the timeline, um, but it is one of the oldest sexual assault uh response programs in the nation. Has has quite a history in the community. Um, and we do, so our our core services are primarily domestic violence uh response services for survivors as well as sexual assault response services for survivors. Though are just recently our services have grown quite a bit and I'll get into that a little further here. So our mission, well, here. That's still a little technical difficulty here. Okay, um, so I'll just read this to you. Safe place works for societal change to prevent sexual assault and domestic violence while offering crisis intervention, education and long-term advocacy services. Um, so we both do services for current survivors, but also try to prevent uh the violence of both sexual assault and domestic violence. And and the primary way that we do that is through advocates. We also have case workers. Um, just to understand a little bit about the philosophy, so if you can empathize with the situation of a survivor that's experienced sexual assault or domestic violence. Um, they've they've had the power and control taken away from them. And one of our very first steps, and this is just our whole philosophy is um providing choice, and that's a way to begin to empower the the survivor that has experienced that kind of violence. Um, so they have, we we inform them and educate them on their rights, uh on their options, on the services and the resources that are available to them. And it's then it's really left to them to decide what they would like to do. We can also inform them what potential results or outcome could occur. Um, but really we we always respect and honor whatever decision the survivor um decides to make. It can even be in a situation where they and it will often occur um that they will want to return to the abuser and we 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 honor that. Um, unfortunately, it takes sometimes several times because of, you know, people, people innately want to have good relationships and want it, want it to work. And sometimes it takes several experiences of that before we realize that we won't work. So anyway. So this is, I'm going to go into a little bit about our services here. So uh we have a twenty-four hour response hotline, um both for domestic balance and sexual assault. Uh, so you can see a little bit of the data around that. We have an average of three hundred um per month of calls. Uh, we also have a twenty-four sexual assault response in a partnership with um St. Pete's. So the same nurse sexual assault exam, uh nurse examiner will call us when a survivor comes into the hospital and then we send an advocate. Um, if no matter what time of the day, it normally does occur in early morning hours or evening hours. Um, anyway, inform the survivor of their rights and accompany them, you know, through the exam if they'd like, and it's always, it's always up to them. They, we don't, you know, the the advocate that that responds doesn't, they can say, well, you know, I don't. I I won't stay if you don't let me to. So it's 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 everything's up to the survivor. And then the other piece uh that's recently started in Washington state. There was some research around non-fatal strangulation. Which is a a very high lethality marker or indicator uh of of potential death to the survivor that could occur. Um, it because literally the the abuser has the life of that survivor in their hands. Um, and the research shows that if there is a strangulation type situation, the potential for death is is much more likely. It goes up significantly, and if it's occurred before, it goes up. Um, so that is a is um another um type of circumstance where we'll respond as well. Um, in uh in a hospital situation, um, also that we have lethality for measure of it's really a first come, first served for our shelter services. You can see that down here towards the bottom, our confidential services uh of a shelter. Uh, but we do, we do also uh assess based on lethality because there's such a high demand. I don't have the data here, but I can just tell you because I researched it. Uh, we have had from January of twenty twenty-two to Jan- December twenty twenty-two, we had to turn away an average of ninety-four survivors every month. Unfortunately, because we just didn't have the space in our in our shelter, we we just don't have the capacity that we need. And understanding that they stayed probably sixty to ninety days. Knowing that that was a turn away each month, that's probably more around thirteen hundred over thirteen hundred people that didn't get those services of shelter where they weren't able to escape a violent situation in their home because there wasn't services and capacity, unfortunately, and it's not that we don't want to, we we definitely want to provide those services and we'd love to to explore having additional shelter space in our community, but it's just been a difficult, um, it's not, it's not an easy thing to get funding for. Um, then we also do respond to uh prison sexual assaults as well. Um, and then we um provide community training. And so we do, um, if you're familiar, I'm sure you're familiar with together. They do a lot of work in Tumwater. Um, so we partner with them and providing education services, both in the middle schools and high schools around healthy relationships, healthy body image, um, red flags of abusive relationships, kind of our prevention work. And we also provide, this is for all our volunteers and all our employees, all our um have uh core training. And we after that, it says three times a year. It's actually quarterly, do that four times a year. Then then the speech program is kind of a unique program that I would, I would say is very effective in the prevention side. Where we have a cohort of of teens from all the local schools, high schools in Tumwater, Olympia and and North Thurston. And they come together once a week on Monday evenings. And again, learn some of those same things that I talked about, healthy body image, healthy relationships. You know, a few uh flags or issues that you might see in abusive relationships. And then in addition to that, they uh develop leadership skills. They also build trust in that environment because it is a real strong, close uh network where they talk about their challenges in relationships, their challenges. Maybe they've seen violence in their own home. Um, so anyway, so that, so it's a real close group that we develop. And it goes for pretty much entire school year. They're currently now doing training, so those teams are going into the middle schools and other schools and presenting on the information that they've learned and and teaching peers. But in addition to that, the I think the most effective piece around that, if you know anything about teens, they're in those formative years around relationships where they met, that's the most important thing to them. And they talk all the time about their their relationship with their friends. Like that guy was, you know, that guy should have done that, or that girl was, anyway, so they have, they're constantly giving each other advice. The other thing is they probably listen to their friends probably more more than their parents. Um, just because they're in that year, so when they're trying to create their own identity as an adult. Um, so anyway, I guess the point here I'm trying to make is it's a very effective way to help prevent uh abusive relationships because they're influencing their friends and seeing these. They're educating their friends on these uh abusive relationships and 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 thus in the future, they won't get into those, or they'll even prevent them from getting into one that they could have gotten into. If they continued with that particular individual or at least set a boundary. So anyway, I'll get on my soapbox there. Um. Uh, let's see, custom design training. So, so we also do training for employers. Um, we did a bystander training for local bars and restaurants. Because if you know, sometimes people will put something in somebody's drink so they can later take advantage of that individual, so we provided some trainings uh for for those local businesses as well. Safe home. So this is our housing program and it's grown, it's now it's our largest program as far as funding goes. We have um over a million dollars in rental rapid re uh rehousing rental assistance for survivors. So we get them into our shelter and have them for sixty-niney days. And the idea, I mean, they're they're essentially homeless once they're fleeing a a violent situation. And so the first place is just to get them to safety, which would be a shelter. Sometimes we will hotel that we don't have a lot of dollars to hotel, to be honest. But if it's a real dire situation, we will hotel them um until we can find a better sit uh situation for them. Housing is, as you know, in our county, is not an easy thing to find, let alone if you're have more barriers like survivors do. Because they don't have, often in those circumstances, they've been coerced and manipulated, so they don't have any financial resources. They don't have a job, they don't have a a salable vocational skill. And or at least they don't have means to their bank account. So there's a lot of barriers that they have, so we are able to pay a hundred percent of their rental assistance. Um, or the rent, also able to pay for the all the deposits, damaged deposits, first and last month's rent. Also able to to broker with the landlords and we do trainings for landlords around survivors as well. To help them be a little bit more educated and sensitive to the needs of survivors. Okay, um. And we also have a partnership now with Homes First, so we have some dedicated homes that we can quickly get um people into our families into. The unfortunate thing is because of the rental market, I think. So I I've heard that a healthy rental market is like five to seven percent vacancy and ours is maybe you guys know better than me, but it's probably, I've heard it's around three, does that sound right? Or somewhere around that, anyway, that is a a a crisis as far as the available rentals and um. So it's extremely hard to get them in to those. So I guess what the other piece I'm saying is we have sixty-ninety days generally in the shelter. We we occasionally extend it, but then that means that somebody else isn't going to be able to get into the shelter. Anyway. It can take up to a hundred twenty days sometimes just to get through all the pieces to get a person into long-term housing and so that that does become a challenge. Um, so we do have a support group, both for um DV or domestic violence survivors as well as sexual assault survivors. Um, we have free um legal advocacy. Uh, we have legal clinics every uh twice a month. Um, in a partnership with Thurston County Volunteer Sir Legal Services. We will accompany the, so we help them with protection orders. Um, you might be familiar with FSC. And we support center, they they also, I think, do some of this. They, I think they work more with the criminal justice and we work more with the civil. But anyway, um. So we help with all kinds of different types of protection orders and we can do that um remotely from our office as well. Um, then we have uh regular business hours. Um, that they can drop in, no appointment needed from nine to noon and one to three, Monday through Thursday. Um, then we do have some gift, so we have a kind of a I don't know if you call it a fun, but we have a book with various types of gift cards. So we have resources for survivors if they need them for food or fuel or toiletries, and then we have some onsite as well, like diapers and feminine hygiene products and kinds of other snacks and things that they might need at that moment. Um, also, if they end up going, if they're a survivor of sexual assault, we also have kits for that, and then we also have moving kits for our survivors that move into the new homes. Healthy relationships are, it's it's a a type of program that I mentioned earlier that we are in the Tumwater Middle Schools and also presented in the high schools, um, that that is the program that we do those presentations around prevention. And then we have the right-of-way outreach that we're doing, what's actually hoteling. So it's a partnership with county and Department of Commerce. I guess it's one of the governor's initiatives around the right-of-way for the I five corridor. So we are working specifically with survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault to hotel them until we can find them long-term housing solutions if they if they like that. Again, it's all up to the survivor. Some of the times they don't. Sometimes they don't want that. Um. Uh, what was I gonna say about that, though? Oh, so that's also in partnership with Oli Maps. Oli Maps does all the recruitment and outreach piece and helps get them on the on the road list. Once they're on the road list, then they become eligible for our services in that hoteling program. Um, where we will basically hotel them until we can get the long-term solution for them, if it's referring them to another housing program or getting them housed through our program. Or whatever else they need. Um, and we're, we're also have a partnership with BHR to do mental health assessments, though. We found that survivors are not generally interested in that. Again, we respect their wishes, so we're looking at other partnerships with Pure Olympia, who we've heard is is more accepted by the chronically unhoused. Um, so anyway, developing that partnership, um. Yeah, we actually have many, many partnerships, so we, there's some funds that are kind of funneled through us. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say through us, what am I trying to say? They're they're specifically for sexual sexual assault response. And they're um, they're competitive funds, but we broker uh 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 a uh community effort to kind of determine how those funds are are distributed. And our current partners are Cielo, Pipe, Providence and Monarch. Um, Cielo and Pipe specifically because of the communities they serve, so they serve out particular communities that they outreach to and help us with that outreach. And then Providence because of the response for survivors and sexual assault, and then Monarch for children. Um. Any other things that I've missed? I think, yeah, here's some, some data points around our services. Uh, so so I mentioned that sometimes we serve survivors several times, um, but this is unduplicated numbers. Um, last year, it gives you a sense of that helpline numbers and um, no, there there are mentions that turn away from the shelter as well. Um, oh, also, we have about twenty, so just staff-wise, we have about thirty-two employees and around twenty or twenty-two volunteers. Um. As they're an important part of our services as well, because we couldn't do the twenty-four hour response for sexual assault in the helpline without the support of the volunteers. Um, oh, if you're, if you know of anybody that would like to be aboard of Safe Place, let us know. I don't think we have anybody from Tumwater, actually the Tumwater Community on our board, we'd be happy to um, consider their application. Um, any questions? Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew, for your presentation. So I actually have two questions, and it might really evolve around one question, but my, my question is, do the police refer victims to safe place? And also, are you made aware of those victim, those that are victimized and require medical treatment, does this medical facility uh contact you in any way?
Um, so I'll answer them as I know. Okay, so the Tumwater Police Department, yes, we do partner with them. We recently, our legal team recently did a training for the Tumwater Police Department. Um, it was, I can't remember how long ago it was. This is a couple of weeks ago, I think, or maybe a month ago. So yes, we do partner with the Tumwater PD. Your second question was that, uh, I didn't quite understand that one, I'm sorry.
So the second question is, am I, if I'm victimized and I ended up needing medical treatment, would that medical facility contact you, or how does that victimized individual realize there is a place such as Safe Place?
Yes, you are correct in that assumption. We we are contacted by Providence once a survivor um uh either comes in or or contacts them. So yes, that's, that's, so they're, they are um made aware of us through uh St. Pete's.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure, you're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
Councilmember Dala.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Matthew. Um, so my question is, we've seen some numbers with the documented domestic violence, just in our community going up, right? And then being informed that is under-reported, right, due to pandemic scenarios. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the relationship or partnership with Family Support Center, right? Like, so we know that you're turning people away because you just don't have the space or the capacity, right? Um, and then some of those clients are going to Family Support Center, some of the, so they're just going wherever they can go, right? And then that cycle and that circle, trying to get into safe place. Has Safe Place ever thought about doing your own housing, like Family Support Center is having to do, because they can't find a bed, so they're actually developing and building their own housing? Have you thought about that as Safe Place? You know, you're, you know, when you're visualizing your future of partnering with Homes First, but what that looks like?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. Um. So, um. Uh, fir- first I should say, yes, we definitely considered it. I've actually raised my concerns to uh the county. And they expressed interest in trying to help us get a shelter. Uh, we even thought about, I don't know if you're familiar with the oil hotel there in Tumwater, we were even looking at that building for being a new shelter. Uh, unfortunately, that didn't work out because it went into bankruptcy, but um, and it took a little longer, it takes a little while to get some of that money together. Anyway, um. Yes, we're looking at that and I'm trying to find different opportunities to do that. There's two, two complications. To this, uh, one is getting the funding for the operations, the other is getting the funding for the building. I think there's money available for for getting the building. Somehow, I think that 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 is coming from, from the state and the county level. I think that we could somehow figure that out. Maybe a CDBG, I might have to work with some of the jurisdictions to help us with that. Um. The harder piece is probably going to be the operations piece is probably, you know, the size that we would need, it'd probably be about a million dollar operation for that particular site, at least like the hotel, the oil hotel would need about a million dollars as far as shelter shelter operations. Um. As far as, yeah, and we do partner with FSC specifically with CE because they are the CE contractor for the county. Um, and work with them very closely, and we do. Um, and we even have a donor that wants to give us land and we just have to build a house. I think that things like that we can do, and I think Homes First will do more homes for us. And we have, like I mentioned earlier, we have over a million dollars a year available just for rental assistance through a HUD grant that we just received through the balance of state. So we have the money for the housing, and if we could get um kind of, I don't know what you call them, but houses like Homes First, where we can literally be subletting them out, and then we can control the in and out of that, we
Right.
Better. In addition to this, I should, I should share this, we don't just leave survivors hanging necessarily when they come and call the shelter. We do um, give them a list of all the shelters in the region as well. So Mason County, Lewis County, Pierce County, um, so they can reach out to those shelters as well in case we are full. Um, uh. And I guess, oh, and I forgot to mention another service we have, it's again through our housing program, but we have a relocation service. Um. But we're such a demand for it, so we're kind of limited to three a week, but we can basically move a survivor that's fleeing pretty much anywhere in the country. Pay for like airfare, train, bus or fuel if they have a vehicle. And they just, the eligibility requirement is they, they need to have a safe place to go. It could be a shelter, it could be a friend, it could be family. Um, and as long as they have that, then we can help get them to one point to the other as far as location. Um, and those again, if it's if it's a lethal situation, then they want to get out of the area, then we can help them um with that. I forgot to mention that program, I'm sorry.
Matthew, thank you, I just have one more question for Matthew. With regard to with survivors and then getting housing, right? How do you protect their, their name, right, for rental or right from their abuser finding them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we have strict confidentiality rules. Um, you know, documents are didacted. Uh, we work on behalf of the client. Um. So so we broker that relationship uh with the landlord. Um, I don't know if that, that's enough. If you wanted more details, I'd probably have to contact our housing.
No, that's good. Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Hi, Matthew. Um.
Hello.
I uh I have not met you personally, but over the um years, I have had some involvement with Safe Place because for many years I was with the YWCA. And um, I, if I didn't have great feeling for all of this, especially as a woman and knowing people even before um I worked at the Y. Um, the stories that women who came to the YWCA in the seventies were still coming back in them from them, I was there from the mid nineties to the early um two thousands and um they wanted to come back and see and and show maybe a daughter or a family member or something where their lives were saved and redeemed and they could go on in life. It was, it was tremendously emotional and um I just want to honor you and Safe Place for the work that you're continuing to do. And many people will never return, but they've gone on to lives that um that they're able to safely live. And so I hope that you're getting some of those stories back because it makes a big difference um in your heart, and it also makes a big difference to keep you working really hard to get funding and to care for these people. And um I just wanted to I just was back there again while you were talking about this, and I was looking at all those statistics. Um, do, are you still receiving a a good portion of your funding uh through the state?
Yes, we are. Um, it's interesting you ask that. Um, yeah, we receive uh are probably the biggest portion from the state for these types of services through DSHS for our shelter. That's the domestic violence portion, and then we receive another portion from That's the domestic violence portion, and then we receive another portion from the Department of Commerce for the sexual assault. So those are kind of our core, uh, fundings. Uh, however. And you might, I was on the news with King Five because. There was a potential cut that was going to be occurring, because if you're familiar with how this funding works, probably not. But I'll, I'll explain it, is that it comes through the federal government through OPFA, um, Office of Crime Victims. Uh, and that money has been going down consistently for the last. Two, maybe even three years. Last year, the state kind of stepped in and filled in the gap where it had been reduced. This year, it went down further and the governor's budget had nothing in it. However, we kind of organized, and not only it was for domestic violence and sexual assault, but also for child advocacy centers like Monarch. Uh, Legal Office of Crime Victims. Um, and then, uh, if you're familiar with, uh, Human Innovations that does human trafficking support services. Anyway, all of those programs are going to be cut through this cut. Not intentionally the state cutting it intentionally, it's just a reduction, but from the federal government that we passed through. But we had asked the state to, um, supplement the difference, and even we've been flat funded for twenty years because we never increased. It's never increased, it's just been flat funded. So you can imagine what the CPI or the, the. Consumer Price Index increase would have been over the twenty years, it's over fifty percent. So it's a significant, significant cut in essence. So anyway. Needless to say, all the multiple coalitions that, that received this funding came banned together and we did an advocacy week, and we, I think we reached about forty-six districts. Um, and I think we are going to get, at least not get cut. Be nice if they did the increase of the fifty CPA, you know, the CPI, but we'll see. We asked for, but we'll see what happens. Um, I, so. Oh, and do you know Susan, who was one of the other founders of Safe Place? Susan is her last name. She works for Institute for Family Development now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I know who she is. Oh, okay. Yeah, she came to speak. I'll have to have you come speak too. Just, uh, we do this, we do this, uh, every year, we do an annual gratitude celebration. And we're able to recognize her for being a founder. That'd be nice if we could recognize you too, if you're a founder.
Well, I, I just, yeah, I wanted to ask for the people who are listening tonight and who may. Um, get really excited and want a copy of our video or something. You know, we're, we're popular. A lot of people watch our council meetings. I'm just kidding, I think, but, um. I, uh, I wondered what would be some of the best and most needed donations that people, uh, from the city of Tumwater could. Give, bring, whatever to.
You know that, I'd like to take some thought into that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Uh, and I. Uh, because we, we always have needs for survivors, um, but let me get back to you if that's okay.
It's wonderful. Yeah, we'll, you know, be happy to, we do that for other organizations, you know, what donations they need, where to take them, that kind of thing. So, yeah. Um, I'm an old donation collector, so I.
Okay.
I know about those things. Well, thanks for being here and, uh, God bless you in this work. It's just. You're, you're in what they call the trenches, and it makes a difference that you're there. So, thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You guys have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, we're off now to the next item. John, you're on again. Pocket Gopher mitigation credit.
Yeah, so I'm going to share a screen, so that usually takes a moment. So this is a good chance to have a drink of water, drink your coffee, cookie, whatever you got going on here to sort of sustain you through this meeting. There we go. Okay, so we are going to do. We're going to backtrack a little bit, uh, remind everyone what. A habitat conservation plan is and how that relates to the pocket gopher, and then how we got to this. Uh, sort of credit, go for credit purchase discussion. So, those of you who've heard it and memorized habitat conservation plans, uh, and the Tumwater story around them, uh, bear with us for a few minutes here. Um, so the Puget Sound Prairies, and I'm, and I should say I'm going to invite Brad, who's done a whole lot of work on this, um, and Mike, Matlock, and Austin. Um, to chime in at, at any point if I leave something out or get something wrong. The, um, and, and absolutely on the top left, that is an actual pocket gopher. Anyone who's wondered what one looks like, um, there they are. Uh, South Puget Sound Prairies, um, support many unique species. Uh, they have been, over the years, extensively developed. Um, and, um, there are many potential conflicts, um, that can happen between development and endangered species. Um, and I should say subspecies, because particularly as it relates to the pocket gophers, there are multiple subspecies so that. The species in Tumwater is different than the one in Yelm, which is different than the one that was in, the one that's in the county, which is different than the one that was in Tacoma. Um, so there are, there are, um, slight genetic differences, uh, between all of those gophers. The specific pocket gopher listing, uh, it became, uh, subject to the Endangered Species Act. Um, as a threatened species in twenty fourteen, we are rapidly approaching the ten-year anniversary of that listing. Um, and it is the most widespread of the protected prairie species in the city. There are other prairie species. That you saw sort of in that first photograph, um, right up there. Um, but in terms of geographic coverage, um, the, the pocket gopher, um, has the widest distribution. Um, the birds and the butterflies, for the most part, are on, uh, port, airport property, and the Oregon spotted frog is really limited to. Sort of the west side of town, mostly in areas that are wetlands, um, where there are streams and wetlands, um, already existing. The Endangered Species Act listing, uh, protects both the species and the habitat. Um, the range of our, our specific pocket gopher, uh, overlaps with the city of Tumwater's UGA. We'll show you a map of that here in just a second. Um, and many of the activities that happen in the city potentially impact gophers and, and to some extent the other species. So that could be development, it should be, it could be the extension of utilities, or it could just, in some cases, be the, the use of land. For example, one of the challenges at the airport, uh, has been the airshow. And just the presence of people on and around the, the runway, the tarmac, um, can be, can be impactful to some of the prairie species. Federal, if you're going to, if you're going to do those activities, you need to have a federal permit. Um, and the city and the port together have been working on developing a habitat, habitat conservation plan, and what that plan is about. Um, and, and I think sometimes people think about it as we're mitigating the impacts of, of, to the gopher, and, and that's true. We are mitigating the impacts to the gopher, but we're also trying to come up with a long-term conservation strategy. And implement a plan for that conservation strategy that allows the gophers to, and the other prairie species, um, not just to survive, but to flourish. And what we say long-term, we mean setting aside land in perpetuity that can be permanent habitat for these species. Um, and under the Endangered Species Act, um, that's, that's sort of the pathway to get to both mitigation and conservation. Um, and it's also. It's also frankly what keeps the Endangered Species Act legal. Um, because, you know, in the, in, under the federal and state constitutions. The, neither the federal government, the state or the local could simply take someone's property and say, I'm sorry, all of your property is now. Going to be dedicated to the pocket gopher. We have to be able to provide some way. For people to develop their property, um, to exercise their property rights. And so. That habitat conservation plan helps to do that also, um, and provide a, provide a path to legality, I guess.
John, do you want us to ask questions along the way, or should we wait until the end?
Well, go ahead, go ahead along the way, and I, I may punt and say, we'll get to that later, but let's, while you're thinking of it, go for it.
Okay, I, the thing that, um. You're saying about, uh, conservation plan for the gophers? Is, so this land purchase, purchase and reserve and everything, is it only for the species gopher? Or what about the other species that could get caught in this?
So let, let me, let me start with an answer, and then maybe Brad can, um, Brad or Mike can chime in with a little bit more detail. But there are different protection, there are different conservation strategies for the different species. Okay, for example, what the pocket gopher needs isn't necessarily what the lark needs. You know, they, the lark may, like, one of the, one of the birds particularly flourishes around the airport in large parcels. That are, you know, where there's very little activity, they have a high line of sight, they can see predators coming. Um, that may or may not be suitable for a pocket gopher. And so the conservation strategies are different for each of these. For the most part, the one that impacts the city the most is the pocket gopher. They said the birds and the butterflies mostly are on port property, and then the, the frog is on areas that, for the most part, are already protected by the, um. Cities, um. Critical areas regulations.
So if I'm the port, do I need to mitigate for the lark? And the other things that are, uh, on the airport property?
Brad or Mike, would you want to chime in? You've been in the discussions with the port.
Yes, um, the lark in particular only exists at the airport, and the reason for that is they need very large areas. And even the areas that are around those large areas can't have tall buildings. They need a lack of structure so they can look out for predators. So, the, the vespers sparrow can sometimes coexist with. The land that's set aside for the gophers, but the vespers sparrow probably cannot. So that's really kind of its own distinct. Subspecies in the draft plan, and so the port is primarily focused on that, along with the FAA. And ultimately, the FAA would love to see the vet, the, um, spiketorn lark be somewhere else entirely. Because the FAA essentially has said that birds and airports are fundamentally incompatible. So that's a long-term. Um. Management strategy that will really carry on between the FAA and the port primarily.
So the port does, oh, yes, thank you, thank you, Mike. The, the port doesn't have to go then by the habitat conservation plan that you're.
They, they do, they do. That's all part of the habitat conservation plan, it's just distinct from the gophers. It's a difference, as John said, it's a different management strategy for the needs of a different species.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Very good.
Neat. So three pauses. Any other questions at this point?
John, I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you. So what we talk about, we need to set aside a thousand acres. Does that encompasses all four species, or is that just for the gopher? I mean, how do we break that down?
That is just the gopher.
Okay, and then we, so that we established that we need at least a thousand acres for that. Have we established how many acreage we need for the other three endangered species?
Mike, do we know the numbers for the other species?
Um, we, we do. I don't know the, the exact numbers off the top of my head, but the. The lark is, is the, actually the most challenging of the species. As John said, the. The frog is pretty much covered with our critical areas ordinance with a little bit of augmentation. And the Oregon Vesper Sparrow is, is a little bit easier too, but the lark is the tough one, so. There's a much larger potential plan area for the lark. And, uh, so that'll be, that's, I don't know the exact acreage, but I know that. You're not even in the game for lark mitigation until you get to about two hundred, three hundred acres. Which is the smaller, smallest. Parcel size than you need for the gopher.
So, so the city's focus has been on the gopher. Because there's city land, school district land, port land, private land, that's all impacted by the gopher. All of the other species, again, with the exception of the frog, all of the other species really only impact the port. And so that becomes sort of the port's mitigation challenge to figure that out, and not that we're not. Partners with them and trying to find that solution, but it's really things that happen on their airport land are the ones that are going to impact those species.
And, and I, I realize that the ports developing the area around the airport, and of course, they can't have extremely high buildings through the air traffic. But is the lark taken in consideration when that development goes around that area? I, I mean, I'm not sure what the lark needs, or doesn't need as far as the, uh, uh, eyesight. And is the port concerned about that? Is that development goes along around the port area?
Yes, they, they will need to take that into consideration, and there's been a lot of discussion with US Fish about just how to do that. So there will likely be. Building size or height restrictions, I should say, on some of those parcels to accommodate the needs of the lark.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So John, Brad, Mike, did I read somewhere, so out of the species, they, they used to all be endangered, but didn't one of them now has moved to threatened? The sparrow? Does that change mitigation and conservation, depending on their status, their federal status?
It doesn't. Actually, I believe the sparrow is still threatened, is not technically endangered.
Okay.
Um, since it's a plan that's. Goes out thirty years, and as we demonstrated now, but how long we've been working on it, it's a real hassle to try to change this. We all anticipate that the lark, excuse me, the sparrow will be listed as endangered eventually too. So when that happens, we will be ready, we won't have to go in and go through this whole process again to amend the HCP.
Right, so we act the most conservative now, right, and stick with that, no matter the fluctuation potentially?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions about HCPs? Okay, I think we've covered some of the information on this slide. In short. You know, having a, having a habitat conservation plan, um, allows for better protection, long-term species protection. Um, because these are permanently protected areas. Um, it creates a structure where there's maintenance of those, um. Of those conservation areas. Um, there are, um, permanent endowments that are used to fund the maintenance of those conservation areas. Um, it reduces frankly uncertainty for development right now, any developer. Um, and when I say developer, I mean city projects, port projects, park projects, school projects, utilities, state of Washington. Um, it reduces the uncertainty that currently exists with projects. I think the poster child. Um, for this has been the Secretary of State's, uh, library facility and new archives, which has been trying to. Land a home here for, I don't, pre, pre-COVID, Mike, so we might be at five years, maybe. Um, that was a fully funded project and ready to go, um, was not able to proceed. Um, and I am guessing at this point, I mean, with a twenty, twenty-five percent cost escalation, there's probably another twenty or twenty-five million dollars worth of construction cost in that project. Um, from just the, just the delay. And so that's, that becomes an example of how that uncertainty. Um, impacts projects and certainly costs, um, coming from those, um, delays. Um. Councilmember Kathy, you have your mic off. That looks like the beginning of a question.
Yeah. Um, you know, the thing that concerns me about this is that. The balance between development. And the environment, climate emergency, all of these kinds of things, and. And I think I used a silly comment before that, you know. We're going to end up killing or destroying the habitat of these animals that are endangered because we're going to do. A, a weird thing, wording, incidental takes, or I, I think it's quite intentional, but. Anyway, the whole, the whole thing, it, it just is, is an assault on, on the environment. And I understand the, the development, but we as a city and in all of these discussions. I, I've never heard a whole lot about the balance. Or how we, who, who, you know. Have signed on for a lot of environmental things and the climate and, you know. We're, we're destroying stuff, whether we're going to have the gophers or the larks or something. Go to another tree or go down the street to another big, you know. But bunch of dirt or something, where they are currently, they will not be. And, uh, what we as human beings understand about. Species habitat is a lot, but it's still weak when it comes to, but we want to. We want to build there, so I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I wish that we could. Talk more in our development and with our new development director about this kind of, of a balance and. Anyway, I've said this, I've said this before, but, you know, I, I don't have much confidence in using conservation when we're gonna buy. You know, hundreds or thousands of acres somewhere else. Where gophers live. But we're going to destroy all the ones where we wanna do our business and, um. And kill them and they don't live there anymore. So anyway, it's just, and, and the, the fact that it's on a prairie, which is so much historical stuff about that is. Is, is just heartbreaking actually to me, but. Um, so, and so I'm, guess I'm also trying to say, let, let's have a little bit more conversation over these coming. Uh, months and years about the balance. And what's the answer for people who are serving in public office to the public who asks, you know, how can you just? Quote, dig that up or something, so it would be helpful to see how we, we. Answer these questions like, like Mike did, he knew the answers, you know the answers, Sean, but, uh, you know, I, you know what I'm saying, a little more.
Yeah, I don't know that, I, I know the answers, um, and you know, I'll let Mike speak for whether he knows the answers, but. You know, that's a really, I mean, what you have identified is a really big issue, it's a broad concern about the environments and the, and the balance of. Sort of humid activity and, and nature. Um, unfortunately, the Endangered Species Act isn't designed to find that balance. The Endangered Species Act is a fairly narrow tool, although it's lots and lots and lots of pages. It's a pretty narrow tool in looking at. Just endangered species and how do we, in that instance, strike the balance between? Um, preserving the land that has those species on it. Again, the federal government can't just say, sorry, your property has gophers on it, now you can't develop it. The Constitution won't let them or us say that. Um, but also says, what if we find a solution that's maybe even better? Than what we have. Think for example, you know. An older couple has a. House on half an acre in the backyard, they've, you know, mowed it and maintained it and whatever, but they don't have a lot of activity. And it's beautiful prairie potential pocket go for soil, okay? They could, when they go to put their deck on their house, have to do mitigation. Okay, because they are potentially impacting pocket gopher habitat. Okay, now that's, it may be habitat, but it's not good habitat. That's not, if I was a pocket gopher, I would not wanna live in their backyard. Because when their dog comes outside, their dogs come and looking for me. Okay, and so there's a lot of perdition that can happen in people's backyards. So it could be significantly better to, uh, to the pocket gopher community. If somewhere down the road, there's a fifty acre piece of property where the pocket gophers can live for, forever. Family after family after family, um, in safety and have the forms they need to eat and have safety and all those kinds of things, and so that's. When we, we often think about, you know, a few of the parcels in town or important property where we're taking, you know. What, what looks like large parcels of land that look like prairie. And we're gonna replace them with another large parcel of land that looks like prairie over here, it seems sort of odd that we're doing that. But there's a lot of different types of pieces of property that are far from being good habitat. Where the, the gopher community will be much happier when they have this conservation land.
Oh, thank, thank you for that, John, and I'm really glad you're you. And not a pocket gopher, because I like you just the way you are.
No, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Well, John's explanation was good, I just might add, you know. Where the pocket, this will stick with the pocket gophers for the moment, where they're living now is really not in optimal conditions. They're all degraded prairies. And when we get these prairies set up, these are gonna be optimized for gophers. They will literally be planted with prairie species with the kind of food that gophers eat, it's gonna be gopher heaven. And they'll be actively managed for perpetuity, which will mean. Um, reseating those areas and keeping out invasive species, uh, out of the prairies, so it's gonna be much better. Uh, for the gophers and indeed, that's the entire purpose of the habitat conservation plan, I can tell you unequivocally, and then we talked with US Fish personnel. Um, development is tangential to them, they, they are all about. Saving this species and ultimately trying to get it de-listed, there's so many of them, so. I think we can, you can feel, you can feel good about that part of it.
God, I hope the birds come to visit them if they all have to move, I, I hope, I hope they show up. Thanks, Nick.
So here, here's a map that sort of shows the, um. Likelihood of occupancy for pocket gophers, so you can see the sort of green dashed line is the. Um, city limits and the, um. Known habitat for pocket gophers is that sort of bright green color, which, uh, surprisingly is right around the airport. Uh, we have, um, high likelihood of occupancy in those blue areas. And we have a low likelihood of occupancy in the yellow. Y- yellows, yellow and blue are important even outside the city limits, because as we think about. Finding locations that we could acquire for permanent. Go for mitigation, those become attractive sites. Those become sites that could be converted, um, maybe they have. Um, trees on them, maybe they have invasive species, maybe they don't have the full complement of, um. The yummy species that, um, a plant species that Mike was referring to. On them, but with some work, they could be brought around to being, um. You know, terrific, um, habitat for gophers. So they, the HCP estimates there's about fifteen hundred acres of conservation land that would be needed to create. Protected habitat, um, for the pocket gopher. Do you know, Mike, how, I remember at one point we were at a thousand acres? How we, how we got to fifteen or is the, is the fifteen all the species?
I think the fifteen is for all the species, I remember a thousand acres for the pocket gopher as well.
Okay. So the primary responsibility, uh, to implement the habitat conservation plan is.
John, can I ask a question about that previous slide before we go on? Sorry.
Yep, absolutely.
I, if I remember the last briefing. It was like a thousand acres is the potential, like, high watermark. As opposed to the potential estimate that would be within the plan. So is this like realistically what we think would be required or is this the high watermark of what could be required?
I think, I, I can only speak to the thousand acres, cuz that's the piece I've paid the most attention to. Um, and that's, that's based on a projection of thirty years worth of development. That we would, if that pace were to continue in the places we think it would happen, we would need. Plus or minus a thousand acres of mitigation. And so, and some, sometimes mitigation, you'll see this in, in a moment in an example, sometimes mitigation uses weird math. That you can have sixty-seven acres of land that has a hundred and seventy credits of mitigation. So if you have really great parcels that you can acquire, you can sometimes. You could sometimes get more mitigation for your, for your acre.
That's helpful, thank you.
So city has primary responsibility, uh, to implement the habitat conservation plan. Uh, part of that is about a federal agency that doesn't want to be in the permitting business, essentially. Part of what this is setting up is the ability for the, for the US Fish and Wildlife Service to transfer their responsibility of. Compliance with the Endangered Species Act to the city of Tumwater. Because the last thing they want is a line of permit applicants at the front counter, um. You know, applying for the deck in the backyard or the commercial building or the community center or the whatever it is. Uh, they want that to happen at a, at a local level. So, you know, as the city's trying to think about how do we begin to implement this. HCP, we get into a little bit of a chicken and then egg sort of thing, and some of you may not have had dinner, so we make sort of a reference here to some food, but. Um, we get into sort of a chicken and the egg, because the service says to us. Well, we want you to start buying land and start, you know, preparing yourself to implement the habitat conservation plan. And we say, but we don't have a habitat conservation plan, so we're not sure what it is we're supposed to be buying or where and how. And, and, you know, one just keeps pointing to the other instead of going around in a circle, um. And, and what the service really doesn't want. Is to end up in a situation where they approve the habitat conservation plan and there's no mitigation available. Okay, be, be, because that just becomes frustrating for them. Becomes frustrating for the people who have gone through the process and then there's no mitigation available, so they are trying hard to get us to. Jumpstart something, and it's part of the reason why we make a legislative ask over and over for money to begin to jumpstart that process. And, and, you know, it's been quite a challenge to get the money to, to jumpstart that. There is some federal funding available, but ironically. You have to have your HCP done before you can apply for the federal funding, so. Back to the chicken, back to the chicken and the egg. One of the ways to deal with that is to, when you can, go out and buy mitigation credits. Where someone has more credits than they needed and they make them available for purchase. So that would create a scenario where the HCP could be approved. And there would be credits available for someone to purchase and move forward with whatever it is they wanna be doing. And meanwhile, the city will still have to be working to buy up land and turn it into, into conservation. So just sort of an update here, uh, we anticipate issuing the draft HCP for public review in March. Of this year, so that's right around the corner. Having some, uh, public input, public process stakeholder meetings, uh, through March and April. That environmental would, review would be completed, uh, on the HCP by the end of twenty twenty-three. The final habitat conservation plan and the permit approvals would happen in early twenty twenty-four, so. You know, we could be about a year, about twelve to eighteen months out, uh, in terms of. Um, having a habitat conservation plan that's, that's ready to, to rock and roll. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, quick question, so is there, um, a standard that the, um. The government, the, the fish and wildlife or whatever have, have said that your. Uh, mitigation land has to have certain things, certain standards, certain kind of land, like. Not the backyard land where the dog goes after him kind of thing, but what, what? Is there a high standard for getting the credits?
Mike, do you wanna field, what would make great pocket gopher mitigation land?
Great land has great soils and it would be probably a hundred to two hundred acres to start. And, um. Usually it will take significant prairie restoration. If it's been a farm, for example, even it doesn't have any trees on it, if it's been a farm. It'll have a lot of plants, varieties and species on there that are not really prairie species. And they'll keep trying to come up year after year, so it will be a, a process of getting it up to a prairie standard. Over a couple, three years and then maintaining it in that condition.
And, and all of this.
And also, I forgot an important part of it, it really needs to have pocket gophers there to start, if at all possible.
And, and is this something that then the city has to go by these? These standards and who, who controls that fish and wildlife does inspections or? The government or how, how does it work?
Yeah, we'll work with them to do that, we have to do an annual report to US Fish, telling them what we're doing and how we're doing it. And in terms of the management, we would likely. Set up a contract with people that do this for a living, someone like this Center for Natural Lands Management. Who, they actually grow prairie species from seeds currently, they grow the seeds. So we would be looking probably to someone like that. To contract with, to actually do the prairie maintenance and restoration.
Great, thank you, that answers my questions, good.
Yeah, it's essentially the, the, in short, the US Fish and Wildlife Services is important cuz it transitions to the next piece. Creates standards for what would be required for. A gopher mitigation area, and like Mike said, you have to have the right soils, it has to be dry, and that's an important piece, you can't. You can't have areas that, you know, have a high water table or flood, um, cuz that's problematic for the gophers. Um, you can't have trees, that's one of the places where we have these sort of environmental collisions, you know, desires to keep and retain trees. Versus prairie, um, and even, even regular prairie has to have its trees removed. Somehow through fire or whatever, or else the prairie would go away, um. And so, so you have to have the right soils, you have the right water conditions, you have to have the right plants and vegetation. And then typically what happens is there's, um. And the, and there's the underlying property ownership, which is held by someone. There's, and there's an easement that's held by someone. And that easement usually belongs to the most common around here is the Center for Natural Lands Management, which like Mike says. Is in the business of creating and maintaining, uh, gopher habitat or prairie habitat. Um, and then with that, whoever creates that also creates an endowment. Essentially a chunk of money for perpetuity that you use the interest off of it. Uh, in order to pay for those maintenance costs. And really, once you've done the conversion, the maintenance costs are not, are not real high. Um, if you've, if you planted everything correctly and, and understand the soil and the location.
Well, at least one conflict we don't have, we're not gonna be taking down forests to do this. No.
Taking down forests?
Yeah, we're not gonna be cutting down trees to please the gopher.
I can't guarantee that.
No, okay. I thought we were gonna go just land without trees, not.
Just, just to be honest. So for those of you who have really become, um. You, you know, fascinated with this topic, there is a website that, working with our consultant. Um, you know, we've, we've been at this for a long time, there's a lot of really great information, if you're fascinated with prairies and pocket gophers. Uh, this is how you can learn, um, a whole lot more. So now let's, now that's all sort of the background story of why are we doing sort of the second half of this presentation? Which is a proposal to purchase, um, a bundle of, uh, gopher credits, essentially, or gopher mitigation credits. So, um, Puget Western, uh, which was a, once upon a time, a division still is a division of Puget Sound Energy. Um, developed sixty-seven and a half acres for mitigation, this was on the west side. Of I five, it was a parcel that had been slated for development. Um, but because they needed mitigation and needed a mitigation site. They decided to turn this large parcel, uh, into mitigation. Um, they received, and this is where the funky math comes in, a hundred and seventy-one credits. For their sixty-seven and a half acres. Because the service believed this was such incredible. Because the service believed this was such incredible soil. It was a large parcel. It was it was excellent. Gopher habitat. It had gophers on it. It had all the all the stars aligned. The gophers aligned maybe is the way to think about it. They in the they needed some of those credits for development and they used sixty of them in conjunction with development, which left a hundred and eleven credits for them to put on the market. Generally, with mitigation, if you have an acre of impact, you need one credit. If that's more degraded habitat that you're impacting, maybe that number, that ratio is a little bit lower. But it's generally one to one to one is as big as it gets, isn't it, Mike? From a from an impact standpoint, you've got you've got mitigation creation on this chart and you have impact on this. So this is the parcel. This is on the west side of I five. On the right hand side, you'll see where it says the trust for the Chehalis Tribe. That's where the new truck stop gas station is located. And I five is just, you can see a little snippet of I five just off to the bottom right of that drawing, but all of that area in red is the subject of this conversation and all of that has been developed as pocket gopher mitigation. That's the that's the sixty seven acres. And if you drive by on Ninety Third, you can look off to the left and see it. It's right. It's right there. So in terms of this study or in terms of mitigation, who needs mitigation out there? Certainly, the city does. Over the next thirty years, we will have utilities, water and sewer lines. We have streets. We have parks. We potentially have a community center that needs mitigation, depending on where that lands. Needs something, you know, our estimate is about ten acres, so it would need about ten acres of mitigation. The school district has two school sites already that need mitigation. That they have acquired those parcels and have been waiting for for mitigation. And as you can imagine, with all the residential growth that's happened, there's there's growing pressure on the school district to think about when and where and how new schools could could show up. The port needs it for airport activity. That could be buildings on airport property, but that could be things like runway and tarmac extensions and utilities and things like that at the airport. Could be for their tenants either on the airport inside the fence or outside. And then I gave the example of the Secretary of State project, which actually was located on one corner of Center Street and Tomwater Boulevard. And in order to try to avoid gopher mitigation impacts, moved to an opposite corner. And these are very, you know, these are very urban corners. Right there at the at the intersection of Center and Tomwater Boulevard. One of one of those sites previously had the oil storage facility located on it. So again, a very, a very urban location. And then also private and nonprofit projects such as commercial, industrial, housing, utilities, things like that are going to need this mitigation over thirty years. So the proposal that we have developed is to is to purchase those one hundred and eleven credits from Puget Western. We would reserve twenty of those credits for the school district. And in fact, the 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 school district is aware of this and is excited about the opportunity. Puget Western is interested in a single transaction. They don't they don't want to be the the gopher mitigation. You know, seven eleven. They want to be able to sell all of these. And so if we were to buy them shortly after we purchased them, there would be a second transaction to the school district. We would also reserve up to ten of those credits for the Secretary of State. They don't know exactly how many credits they need at this point. But we would hold ten. We would hold thirty credits for the port for mitigation of port activities. We would save thirty credits for ourselves. And we would put on that we would make available on the open market twenty one credits on a first come, first served basis to anyone other than the four agencies up above. And again, those could be nonprofit. This could be commercial. Those could be whoever who is looking for those credits. Obviously, you can see here, we've talked about needing a thousand credits. This is a hundred and eleven of those one thousand. So it's hardly getting us to the destination. And I think I think Mike knows that I believe the current development that has been talked about, speculated, rumored in Tomwater is something like five hundred acres. So we don't, we have even one fifth of meeting what the current demand could be. So here's how we would cost these. So again, the city would purchase all of them to to anyone who buys within forty five days, so that we have very little carrying cost to anyone who purchases within forty five days. They would pay their share of the original purchase price, which is just over ninety thousand dollars per credit. We're talking about a ten million dollar transaction to buy a let one hundred and eleven acres. They would also pay a share of the original transaction cost. That is the cost to, you know, whatever it is, the recording fees and, you know, other kinds of things associated. They're gonna be pretty small numbers, but for that transaction from Puget Western to the city. Everyone would pay a share of those. There would also be the secondary transaction costs and use, for example, the school district. So we buy a hundred and eleven from the school district. We then own them, or I'm sorry, we buy a hundred and eleven from Puget Western. And then we sell twenty to the school district. There are probably minimal costs associated with that second transaction. And and the new purchaser would pay would carry the costs for that transaction. That is for transaction sales happen within the first forty five days. Okay, if it's more than forty five days, then whoever buys those credits has to pay the actual interest cost to the city. We would actually do an interfund loan probably from our sewer utility. And then and then pay it back. And they would also pay a handling charge of forty five hundred dollars per credit per year. And that's for any city purchase over the forty five days. And frankly, part of that is about an incentive so that if there's people out so that people buy the credits and they carry them instead of us carrying them. Okay, we can do an interfund loan, but we don't want to do a big one for a long time. If there's people out there who are gonna need them in the future, then great. They can buy them and hold them instead of us.
So John, I got a question.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, so do you anticipate us holding these for long or they're gonna be used within the forty five days?
We, the school, the school district is ready to do their transaction, I believe, in forty five days. They're ready to do. They're ready to do it quite quickly. We have a question out to the port as to how long it would take them, whether they would want to buy those thirty in in less than forty five days. It would be great if if they did. You know, we'll hold our thirty. We'll have to check with the Secretary of State to see what they want to do. In terms of the twenty one ones that we're holding, we don't, we don't know of someone who's waiting for those, but there could be someone out there who'd be interested in buying those fairly soon. I hope, I sort of hope they don't get sold too fast because I think they're an important piece of being being able to demonstrate the ability to implement the habitat conservation plan.
Right, so when it comes to our funding going forward and asking, okay, I'm tracking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member Schneider?
Thank you. So my question is, John, if I was a developer and I wanted to bring, say, industry in here and I found eleven acres in Tomwater, I wanted to put my my warehouse or whatever company I had at the time. And and I would have to allow for for these credits. So I bought that eleven acres and then I would have to have an additional almost million dollars to buy the credits from the city before I can do that development. Wouldn't that be a deterrent to some developers or not because of the cost factor and all this or no?
Uh, it is, this is, no question about it. This is adding ninety thousand dollars per acre to the cost of development.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But in the absence of this, there's no development.
Right, okay. It would be a deterrent and somebody said, well, I'm gonna have acquire an additional million dollars that would develop if I had eleven acres. I'll just move further south and avoid Tomwater altogether. That that would be one of my concerns.
Yeah, it it becomes a factor in the equation. And but again, in the this is simply a way out. In the absence of this, it doesn't mean they can develop. It's not like this is an optional thing. We're simply providing people a path out to be able to to meet the requirements of the of the habitat conservation plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also just add to that, Joan and Councilmember Schneider. A further deterrent is is not having an HCP for this community. Because that is even less predictability. There's a lot more predictability if we're able to set up a responsible regulatory framework and you'll hear that from them now.
Thank you, Austin. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. So are we using and needing some of our credits for Trails End?
You you actually already own credits for Trails End. You purchased them, goodness gracious, at this about the same time you purchased the property. We're holding credits for the for the Trails End project and for the Roundabout at Seventy Ninth and Old Ninety Nine.
We bought credits all the way back when we first purchased the land from Trevo.
Correct. Probably two, probably two years later. Is that about right, Mike?
It's okay.
It's in that say, it's in that timeframe. But but we only have enough credits to do to do those projects. I think we purchased ten, we used two or one and a half for for a different for the widening of Highway Ninety Nine right there at Tomwater Boulevard. We use some of those credits and then what's left is for Trails End and the Roundabout. Any other questions?
I I have a question. I wasn't sure, Joan, if you're done with your question. I so ten million dollars is sort of roughly the the capital that's needed to sort of get this underway. And I think you mentioned that we would pay that with an interfund loan from the sewer. Is that correct that how we would finance that purchase and then charge ourselves interest on the interfund loan and then pay it back over time?
That's correct.
So I guess, I guess my question about that is like, is does that impair our sewer facilities plans that we have in the future in any way, or I mean, that's largely funding that we've been saving for other capital investments, but if if we are sort of hopefully closing down these costs pretty quickly, then we recoup a lot of that money pretty quickly.
Absolutely. And that's really, that's really the goal. And and what we end up carrying are probably the thirty credits that belong to the city. And ultimately, those get paid back on that loan as capital projects pay for them. So whether it's a sewer or a road or a community center or whatever, you know, taken as an example, you know, again, we've used ten acres for a community center. We could easily end up needing ten acres of mitigation. So that's about nine hundred thousand dollars that we'd get paid back to that interfund loan from the community center project.
Okay. And just in terms of assurances from other partners who would buy these credits. But like, what what comes first here? Do do they sign agreements or MOUs with us in advance of us purchasing all these credits that they will be doing that? Or is this sort of a thing where we know they need it? So it's sort of a good faith.
So here's, I skipped it. Can you just hang on to that question for a second? I'll answer it. Let me do one more thing here. So so we've talked about the financing. We need somewhere between five and eight million dollars in financing. We hope that's closer to five. And and again, that's that's probably more dependent on the port purchasing their thirty. We've talked about a five million dollar loan from the sewer utility. And then that those city credits would ultimately be sold to utilities and capital projects and the and and the loan paid off that way. So the next steps, this gets to Councilmember Alters. There's a bundle of things that would have to sort of happen together. One is there has to be the what we've articulated about how many credits are being saved for whom and for how long and who pays how much needs to turn into a policy. Okay, so that so that it's clear how those credits are going to get used over time. Second of all, there needs to be, and maybe first of all, there needs to be a purchase and sale agreement with Puget Western. It says DWI should be PWI. Specific to Councilmember Alters' question, there also needs to be two accompanying agreements, one with the school district and one with the port for the eventual purchase of those of those credits. Especially if those credits are going to be purchased within forty five days. Because again, we'll we'll set this up so that credits come into us and then back out right away. And we don't have, we don't actually have to have the loan carry that amount of money. So you're right, we want to make sure that we have agreements and and Austin's actually been working on the first of those with the district. And the the parallel to it would be the port. And then there also needs to be an interfund loan ordinance. So all of those documents would have to come to you at sort of the same time to move this forward. And then obviously, we need to finish the HCP. So you know, what's the what's the risk in this story? I mean, I guess the risk is that the HCP takes longer to complete or somehow, you know, the Endangered Species Act goes away and there's no longer habitat conservation plans. That's pretty unlikely. And we're on a path where I think conservation is here to stay. And even even when the politics were different, it's difficult to unravel the Endangered Species Act. So yeah, questions and discussion?
So John, do we have commitments from the folks that you wrote up there to to buy to to purchase these, support the school district, the Secretary of State? And then are we just have those three? Is that right?
So we we have, we have a commitment from the school district. We have, and again, obviously, at this point, it's a verbal commitment. We have a strong interest from the port in making this happen. And I think in the ports world, it's just a question of do we buy now or later? The port obviously needs mitigation credits. So you know, this is an opportunity to 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 get some. It's not all the credits the port needs to do everything on port property. But you know, this is, this is some and it's gonna be a wait before others show up. And we have not talked with the Secretary of State yet. Again, they're a little bit further along in this process. I would love it. You know, I would say if 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 you're supportive of this approach tonight, I think we should reach out to the Secretary of State's office and see where they're at. Again, they don't even have a lease at this point with a with the port. So they may be reluctant to actually buy those credits. But the policy would have a structure that again would encourage them, that the sooner they buy those credits, the cheaper the credits are.
So with these three, and maybe I missed it in mixed in with Michael's question, so if these three purchasers of the credits come through with purchase. come through with purchase um at some point here, how much does that reduce our interfund loan?
Uh, it turns it to about a five million dollar loan. Can I, can I stop sharing screen? Are there any more questions about anything in the, do we want to go back to the map or? Okay. I just love to see everyone's faces.
So I guess our next step is to just kind of get um more of a consensus of what we want to do. Oh, Councilmember for them.
Yeah, thank you, John. Appreciate um presentation. I don't know if I missed. Have we purchased Gofer credits or is this the first time that we're really looking at this?
We purchased them once before the Wentzford Trails End. We purchased, we purchased ten credits from the Kaufmans uh that were left over from
That's right.
From their development, their mitigation site is uh sort of over by the Bush Farmstead. That's where their their mitigation site is.
So is the the biggest um allotment that we have ever had a chance to uh to look at then? Okay, Michael shake it and say, okay, dog.
Councilmember Dahoff.
Yeah, so I remember that past discussion on what the credits were, right? And then the cost of this credit, right? We, the cost will only continue to go up, right? And so I feel like it's now or never to be able to do this. And because we do have potential other partners, it makes it more digestible. Coming from our sewer fund, um, but I'm bump, but it's frustrating that the costs are going up, but we need to do this. So I'm in support of it because if we don't do this, what are we, what are we gonna do?
Right, the the HCP, I think, uh, underestimates the cost of credits at about fifty to fifty-five thousand, I think, per acre. The ones we purchased from Kaufmans were about seventy thousand dollars per acre. Um, and these and these are ninety. That's just land value. I mean, and frankly, our conversations from with Pugil Western have gone on for a couple of years. So the value's probably gone up and to Pugil Western's credit, they have held it at their original offer to us. Councilmember Alters.
Oh, I think Austin was about to, go ahead, Austin.
I I was gonna say, I think it's it's important, the thing about that cost, not only is land value, right, but also the savings cost for a lot of these developments, right? We talked a little bit about the cost of just delaying construction. Um, these credits won't mean those projects can break ground immediately, but they will occur on a faster timeline than if we waited for the HCP to fully roll out and purchase land and restore it to prairie and all that. So I think it's just important to think about that, that potential cost savings as well later on.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, I was just gonna agree with uh Lieta, Lieta's points. But like, this is all, this is all, one of the difficulties I've always had with this is just sort of imagining like, what is a thousand acres of preserved space actually look like? Like that amount of land seems like so big in my mind that it's hard for me to sort of grasp what it would look like. And I think one thing that sort of helps me um digest this, to borrow a term from Lieta, is you know, how how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time, right? How how do you sort of tackle a project this enormous that poses, you know, a pretty significant um either opportunity or barrier for the future of our city when it comes to economic development and certainty for for us, for businesses, for all sorts of folks. You know, it's a little bit at a time, like, maybe this is the first time we do this, but it's like, if this opportunity was fifteen hundred acres to buy this, I mean, it would be impossible for us to do that. So it sort of seems like this is probably the most feasible first step of what might be similar future steps to make sure that we actually are able to meet the need. So it's like a challenge, but I I I think it's important that we move forward and do this while we have the opportunity to.
Councilmember Agabi.
So if my notes is correct, it seems to me that you said if the um HCP is not set up within a timeframe that you anticipated. And we have bought this credit. My word, are we out of uh ten million dollars? At that point in time, that's one. And then two, what is the alternative? If the HCP is not set up within that timeframe, thank you.
So, so I don't think, I don't believe there's a scenario where the requirement for the HCP goes away. Again, that would require essentially Congress to repeal the Endangered Species Act. Um, so there'll always be a requirement for the HCP. I think the challenge, the biggest challenge for the city is no one needs credits until there's an HCP. But the moment there's an HCP, a bunch of people need credits, okay? So to go out and buy land and convert it and all that's gonna take time, this is a way of having instant credits. And um, you know, if that's eighteen months away, that's something we can carry that loan, we can bankroll that for that period of time. If for some reason, instead of eighteen months, it becomes forty-eight months. That's where I think it become, that's probably the, I think, the biggest risk to the city is is it takes too long to to get to the finish line. The fact, frankly, that we purchase these credits and that we have done that with a loan, I think actually gives us a tool to encourage the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to get this done faster. Because the last thing they want is a story about how the city of Tomwater went out and bought these credits in anticipated compliance with the HCP that the service took four years to complete. So I thi- I think taking this action actually helps us ensure we can get it done in a more timely fashion.
Because, because it's almost like we're making good effort.
Absolutely. Councilmember Dahoff.
Can I ask a question? Is that, um, I know that the county, Thurston County, got their HCP approved. And I thought they were be way behind us. So how did they get theirs approved before ours? Is it because they bought so much mitigation land? That it sped up the process?
I'm gonna let Mike fill that one.
They actually started about a year or two prior to us.
Oh, did they really?
So we're really on pretty similar tracks for the process of getting through one of these things.
I thought they were behind. I'm gonna have to apologize to one of the commissioners for giving her a bad time. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
Was either Austin or Mike, do we know, do they, does a county have mitigation land at this point available and developed and ready to sell credits?
I don't think that they have it online right now. I know that they're they're actively looking for mitigation lands. I don't know what they have online now, but I haven't heard that they do. Have you heard, Austin, if they have anything ready to go?
I've heard it's actually been a struggle to identify eligible lands that you could restore. Um, which kind of highlights, I think, the opportunity in front of us, right? You you just don't know how long it can take to find the right properties for the right price. And that have gophers on them and that would be excellent gopher habitat.
I just thought of a question. Did, in the list that you gave of things that we're gonna need to do, I guess, be Austin's job, uh, but uh is talk to landowners and try to purchase land and and that kind of thing. Is is that anywhere in in this discussion? Or is that just one of the things that the HCP calls for us to do or how we're gonna get land?
So it's not part of this transaction? So the list I put up there was mostly about this transaction. A significant portion of Austin's job is going to be buying those parcels, contracting to have the mitigation done, to have them turned into habitat. Um, and sort of managing that process. So that's, yes, that has to get done. It is independent of this transaction. We're hoping this transaction should sort of jumpstarts us while that other work is getting going.
And do people know just that they can sell their land? Turn it into these credits or? I'm trying to think if I own the land, it's what, and it's something that you want, want. How does that go, go? How does that happen? How do we know who to talk to?
Um, you know, we would, we would work with real estate people. You know, I think the word is out there, cause like there's other like Wash Dot, the Department of Transportation has mitigation parcels in Thurston County that they have um acquired and developed. So I would guess amongst the landowner community, you know, this is, this is farmland, pasture land. Um, I'm, you know, those folks talk to each other. And hey, there was somebody from Tomwater who came around yesterday looking to buy my twenty-five acres. Did you see that guy? I mean, they're they're talking to each other.
And he had money in his pocket.
And he had money in his pocket.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to ask about that little piece, cause I remember that in some of the things that we read for tonight. Process. Thanks. Your job, Austin.
Well, and maybe I shouldn't say this on the record, but this was part of the job that excited me. Um, Mike and John were very upfront with this part of the job. And I consider myself a conservationist and when I'm not working, I try and spend as much time away from people as possible. Um, so for for now, I'm excited about this part of the job. And I think part of what we need to recognize is the gophers are the real winner in this situation. It's, it's kind of amazing when you talk to wildlife biologists, how they're managing to survive on really suboptimal habitat currently. When really we will be providing in perpetuity the the perfect habitat for them with lower mortality rates, with lower exposure to predators, with really just a greater quality of life.
Councilmember Agabi, hands up.
Yeah, my question is to Michael. Michael, but uh in a, in a, on the average, about how many gophers would we say we could be able to we can fit in a, in a neck and for us to be successful, I just can't see, I I just have converse. Conservation, about how many gophers would? I mean, do you think we're able to conserve the new habitat?
Terms of number of animals?
Yes.
That's a great question. It's pretty much unanswerable. We don't even really know how many gophers are out there. We don't know how many gophers it takes to uh for the species to be delisted at this point. Those are all quite, there's great questions, questions that we still need to answer.
Yeah, this is very, this was um confounding in the early days of the listing. And even prior to the listing, because it's very different than, and maybe some of us remember the stories of the California condor being endangered. And there were like twenty-eight of them left in the world, okay? We literally are counting the number of of condors that there were and how we could bring them back. Whereas this is really about what we know is some number of gophers live on some amount of habitat and the amount of habitat is diminishing over time. And you can simply play that out and say at some point, the habitat's gone and thus the gophers will be gone. And so it's about sort of putting your foot in the door and saying, okay, stop. Before this gets too far, we have to figure out a way that we're going to permanently protect space for the gophers. So that as the, as the habitat diminishes, we've left something behind. And and the urban places that are cities can be cities and the rural places can be rural and the gophers can flourish in those rural places. And we may never know how many gophers there were, but we know that if we developed all the habitat, there would be zero.
I just, I just have a quick comment I'd like to make. Um, Austin, I think I I look at the group here tonight and you're probably one of the newest people here. I look at the group tonight and I know I'm I'm the longest serving and the oldest person here tonight. And I'm certainly glad that I have stayed around and lived this long because you are the first person who has ever said save the gophers, the gophers are the winners. I'm, I, I, I've always wanted to, my voice wanted to stand up to the gophers. And people have said, you know, don't go through that again, John. Um, and so I'm glad that, I'm glad that you said it and I'm glad that you're here and this is a, this probably turned out to be one of the great projects that Tomwater's taken on this conservation project. So, so thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Okay, stay tuned. We will be bringing you all sorts of things and trying to finalize all of those things, but um we will um proceed on with your direction. I appreciate it very much. And the gophers appreciate it.
Okay, so now we're to mayor, city administrator, but John, who is going to go first on this one?
Well, I have sort of a, I have just a sort of a quick question, though. We have a little bit longer one that the that the mayor wants to talk through. So, so historically, this has to do with setting agenda items. And I just want some sort of feedback because we've sort of played with the process a little bit and taken a few liberties. And I want to make sure we have a space to talk about that. And if anyone is uncomfortable with it, we could talk about it. So historically, an item that comes to council has to either go to committee to be vetted. Has to go to a work session to be vetted. Or it shows up on considerations at a regular council meeting. Okay, in other words, things don't go from zero to consent. That there, there was always an opportunity to talk about them somehow, okay? Over the past three months, there's been a whole list of things from relatively minor amendments to consultant contracts. Oftentimes, it didn't change the price a whole lot. Or interlocal agreements like with the Department of Ecology that changed some of the provisions of an agreement, but not really the substance of it. Or um extensions like renewals of agreements like for uh, the fire training facility or other kinds of things where we had just renewals of things that didn't have a lot of controversy, didn't have a lot of dollar signs attached to them. And so I took a few liberties over the past few months to move those from zero to consent. And and part of my thinking was, well, if there was a piece in there that people had questions about or that they wanted to remove or they wanted a conversation about, you could always remove them to considerations. Any council member can remove any item on consent to considerations. Um, and that part of that was about simply trying to not trying to avoid filling our committee agendas and our work session agendas with this sort of routine work. Okay, that obviously was me taking some liberties with those items to sort of see how it worked. It, from my perspective, seems to work fairly well, but I wanted to create some space. If anyone's concerned about us doing that, you've noticed us doing that and it's a problem. It's, I, you know, whatever your perspective is, um, I'd appreciate some input on it. Um, and if you want us to keep doing that, we can, we can do that. Councilmember Dahoff.
Thank you. My initial thought was, uh, yes, I always appreciate that, right? Cause I prefer a quicker cadence. The only challenge I have with that is when it goes through a work session or um one of our committees, I have better retention of those subject areas. So when I do get questions or when it circles back around, I remember it better versus just reading it as I do on Sunday before council. So I've noticed like that one, when we've had those deadlines where we literally went through the alphabet and started over again, and I get that. That I'm not retaining that. that I'm not retaining that as well as I would if some of those elements on those projects where it has those threads where it will come back around. Um, I'm not retaining it as, as I normally would. So that's the only thing I'm concerned about. Um, is those connections to long-term projects and how it does come back up again. But I think I would save more time instead of asking again, like, what was that? If we actually talked about it in a work session or um, a committee.
Any other comments?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with how we've sort of handled it over the past couple of months. But I also want to defer to if, if folks feel strongly the other way. I, I don't really feel strongly one way or the other. Um, I, I have no concerns over the ways we've handled it because, you know, I, I'm reading through the consent agenda like, like all of us are. And if, if there are things need to pull out, then, you know, I, I haven't found anything that that I wanted to pull out that I thought rose to that level. But if, if other folks feel differently, I respect that and will be happy to sort of kind of do things more the way that they were. But I, I don't have any concerns over the ways we've handled it over the past couple of months.
Go ahead, Joan.
Oh, no, go ahead, Angela. You, you go first.
Um, if things are routine and it looks like some of them are and you, you know what should or shouldn't go on there, then I have no issue with it, but um, if it's working and the flow is well, then you know, I approve of that. So, but if there's a way for you to let us know or highlight, um, that can work for me too.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that um, you know, some of this has to do with a, a trust issue. And um, you, you know, we've all that are here have worked with John and with this staff for a number of years. And so I, I that's, that's a big thing for me. And I know we have some changes and things coming up and I just want to stay aware of, um, you know, what, what do I, what do, like, we had a kind of tied into the others thing, you know, what do I need, need to know? And is there anything being put on here that has gone too quickly or too, what, what, what I'm saying is that, that I'm, I'm okay with this because I've, I've done some, some pulling of things over time and I feel free to do that and to ask that question. Or I see it and I've maybe talked to John ahead of time, what, what is this exactly or something? So if we feel that kind of working relationship and, and trust, um, I, I think that, I think that it's fine to to do that. And I think it behooves us to read that more closely. And if we do have questions, figure out how we can get them um, answered. So, um,
Members for that?
Uh, thank you, John. I agree with the, what Michael said and Joan and Leah as well. I appreciate that the end too, even though there's a whole alphabet to read through that the mayor does read through all the things that have been approved. It just shows you how much work has been done. And I always appreciate when she lets people know that, you know, a lot of work went in behind the scenes on this and this is the final. You know, when it goes on consent, it's the final thing. So, um, so it's not something that we do like willy nilly. It's something that we've been working on. Um, and we can get these things expedited. So I don't have a problem. And I appreciate Joan's comment about the trust part too, because yeah, we trust you guys. So um, we're to help us make good decisions. So, thank you.
So I, I would just, I would just remind everyone, when you get the packet and really whether it's consent or consideration. And keep in mind, you know, you get that on Thursday. You know, you can always email us, call us, call, call me or the particular staff person or department director. Um, if you, if you have questions, if you have questions that you want to ask amongst everyone or you think everyone has that or you want to make some sort of comment about it, then anything on consent can be pulled off of consent by simply when the, when the mayor says this is, you know, are there any changes to the agenda? Say, I'd like to remove item, whatever, and it will move to consideration. So that can be an opportunity to uh, discuss it, vote on it individually, ask questions. Um, and it even can be to pull something to ask that it go to a committee, that it have more discussion, that if you believe it. You know, I'll pick, I'll pick on an item. There's an item coming to put another uh, cell phone um, array on the top of a water tank. And so maybe a question would arise in how many of these do we have and what policy do we have about which ones are up there? And why does the port get a share of the money or whatever? I mean, that could be something that then returns to the Public Works Committee to have a conversation. I'm not trying to encourage that that become a conversation, but you know, that would be a way that it could, it could move to that space.
Is there still the, the consideration that how, how council members can suggest or put um, something on the agenda? If two, two council members agree, they'd like to have that on the agenda and that goes. And what's the trail for that?
Um, you know, I'd have to pull it up because I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I mean, there's a, there's a path to get there and if all else fails, I mean, just say, hey, two of us would like to talk about whatever this issue is and let me know or let, let the mayor know.
Okay, I just wondered. Some of us have done that over the years, just, you know. That, and that's right. We either talk to you or we talk to Pete or both or something. Maybe there's folks here that don't know that's an option. I don't know.
So we will, we'll proceed along this path of trying to uh, be judicious about what things sort of move forward. Like I said, from, from zero to consent. Um, and you know, let us, let us know if we start to get it wrong. And, and we'll go from there. But I think, I think this will help your committee and work session agendas tremendously. Because you will, you will get bogged down in some of this renewal, renewal stuff. So, thank you. So Madam Mayor, uh, next item is yours or Anne's.
All right. So, uh, uh, I think everyone, pretty much everyone knows. Uh, Angela and Joan, I have not been able to touch base. Uh, so I'm going to turn this over to Anne. This is in regards to our uh, new city logo. And so uh, this is going to um, uh, present it and to bring it forward for uh, the council. So Anne, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I feel like this is a finale here tonight. It's been a, a long meeting with some pretty tough subjects, but I am really pleased to bring this forward to you. Um, if with your permission, I'd like to walk through some of the images and talk about the design process. And I'm going to share screen unless uh, somebody holds their hand up and says otherwise. Okay. And hopefully, one moment. Practicing with uh, having more than, more than one monitor. So tonight, um, we're bringing forward a uh, logo that was designed specifically to be feature two of Tom Waters' most recognizable features. Um, we're striving for a clean, bold, elegant design, one that wouldn't age or look dated quickly. And uh, the simplified uh, rendering of the Brew Tower that you see is not just the architecture of the area, the history of our city's economic growth around the river and our commitment to preservation of historic structures. One other thing. Oh, what am I doing here? Is it not showing as, as, as?
No.
Hit slideshow.
I did. I'm seeing it in my other side. I'm not enjoying this. This is the problem with having two screens. Okay, give me one second. Sorry about this. It worked perfectly when I was home alone. Okay, I think my biggest problem here tonight is that I have two monitors and I've never had that for a meeting before. So you might have to, we might have to go with the PowerPoint.
We can go ahead and do, uh, we can see it.
Okay, I'll stop. I'll stop and reshare one more time. How's that? Just in case, or when, if somebody wants to present this for me, that works too. You're not, you're not getting the full screen, are you?
No.
Can you go up to where it says slideshow?
I've already clicked on that. It's just not seeing it. Yeah. Oh, I know. This is my two screens. Look at me. This is the second time today that John has had me go to a meeting and present where I didn't know how to use any of the tools. So we started this morning. Now you can see the full screen. Is that right?
Yep.
There it is. Yes.
Oh, man, I feel like a winner. I think we're done here. Okay, let me go back. Let's see if Anne can advance first slides. Um, so as I walk through this, we're going to show you some examples. Uh, so we were lucky enough to work with a very talented um, graphic designer who's fairly new to the area and working in Olympia. And one of the comments, um, as someone who's new to the area is that uh, for him was hearing that the brew house is just ubiquitous with the city and, and very connected. So you'll see in the new logo design that the overall shape uh, reflects the architectural language of the tower with the arched windows and the decorative uh, brickwork. And I think in some of our earlier conversations, we talked about how uh, the Brew Tower, uh, the architecture is repeated throughout the city. And over time, you know, the community has really defined that this this iconic structure as an important icon. Advance my slide again. This is what um, the logo would look like on some of our trucks. The other feature that um, we incorporated into the logo was Tamar Falls. It's a top visitor attraction to the area and another aspect of what makes the city a destination. And for the purpose of the um, logo design, we use some flowing stylized lines at the bottom to represent water and just looking for um, an element that would bring visual life instead of, you know, a kind of a flat or static image. And there, I skipped over our color palette. We did opt to go for something that's a little more natural, organic, a little versatile. This will work really well, both in print or digital and has a lot more flexibility over time. Um, we're moving away from the eighties colors, the burgundy and the brown and the um, really saturated colors. Uh, to something that um, has more of a relationship to our area. So those are all of my slides. I can hide behind uh, the image here, or I can take it down. Uh, it's up to you.
I think we can leave it up for a minute. So, um, and so unfortunately I didn't get to talk to Angela or Joan, but um, so this is what the logo is going to be. And we want to roll this out shortly because we have a lot of of product orders on hold until we get to the new logo. So uh, any discussion questions? So I know that there were several people that were very enthusiastic about it. So.
Are you looking for? So, what did people, people say? I mean, you know, I imagine they're all here tonight who had comments about it.
So, neither, maybe council members. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I did see, I had the opportunity with the mayor to see this today and she did go over it. And I did appreciate she took time out of her busy day to show it to all, most of us and specifically me this morning. I think it's great. I like it and I express that. I think it relays to who we are. Uh, you know, it doesn't play off the waterfall is so much, but it shows that the water is an important part of our heritage. And of course, the tower as well. So kudos on, on the design. I like it. I'm ready to order shirts and hats right now. So Christmas would be right around the corner. So where's my order form? I like to be the first one to buy something.
Well, council members, um, council member Schneider, if I recall, I do owe you a baseball hat. Um, from a, from a few cleanup drop offs ago. So uh, I would be delighted to order a hat for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks, Anne.
Uh, council member Gabby.
So I saw this on, on Sunday and I, and I have to say this is bellicimo. So when I saw it, it kind of complimented my ensemble. So I was not to like, I like it.
Oh, sorry. Did I catch you off?
No, I'm done.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I guess the gist of my response when I told the mayor is it's, I'll take anything over our current logo. The only challenges I had is I don't dig pastels, so I would have preferred primary colors. And I also don't think the waves, the water, it's more abstract and modern versus the brewery. So it, it's just off for me. But then you can view it like our past and our future and modern, right? So you can frame it however you want. And then I was channeling Joan and I was like, I would take a tree over that water, right? So, um, so I'm, I think we're always going to find something. What about, what about, what about, right? But the gist for me is I'll take anything over our current logo. So I can take the logo for, I can interpret it however I want. Um, and in fact, I might wear a hat, the black and white version. So, nice work.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Kind of an art school critique there.
I like it, but is it going to be green, blue, or black and white? Or is it going to be all three? We get to choose. That's my question.
Uh, absolutely. Great question. Um, there'll be different colors and they'll have specific uses. And as you saw with the vehicles, you know, we have dark blue vehicles. So the blue lends itself really well. And probably one of the most important design uh, features is you always want to, if it doesn't work in black and white, it doesn't work. Um, and so we started with black and white. Um, and I did want to acknowledge Council Member Jefferson because when we first started working on this, um, I really didn't know how we were going to incorporate the falls. It was a suggestion she made. And um, we had many iterations of what water might look like and if it's falls and if it's Capitol Lake or if it's an estuary. Um, and I probably wouldn't have worked that hard except for, that was your suggestion. So thank you for that input.
Excellent, excellent. I like it.
Uh, council members, right now, and then I'll go to council.
Um, I like it. I really do. Um, it looks modern. I, for me, when I saw the water piece of it, because of tumwaters, like tumbling water, the tumble, for the, um, for the Native Americans, what they called the river before. I think it really does depict when you see it coming down at the bottom like that with the, the swirls that it has, that it really does depict that. It's our native name that for tum, uh, tumbling water. So, but I really like it. It's uh, like Leah just said, it's an improvement over the last one. And I think it's really functional. We've looked at so many other cities have, you know, just other cities have, you know, just updated, um, graphics like this. And so it's, it's nice to take that step and, and, uh, you know, change our look. You know, we like to cut our hair sometimes. We change our clothes. It's time to change our logo. So.
Thank you.
Do you want to go, councilor Kathy, or do you want, council member?
Council member who?
Old Housever, or do you, did you have something?
Uh, no, I mean, um, I, I'm going to stick with my first response to this. I, I, I don't care for it. Um, I, I don't, I don't like that big building sitting there, um, that it, I, and I, I miss the fact we have any tree anywhere. And the water looks like waves to me instead of tumbling water. And that thing makes me think of the ocean. Maybe that's just because I spent so much time in California, living near the ocean. And so, um, it's not, it's not something I would, I would choose. Um, I can live with it. Um, I can get used to seeing it on trucks and things, but it, nothing about it makes me jump up and down. But it's, it's great, it's great graphic work. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, but I don't, I'm sorry that we chose the tower to be the main thing that tells us about Tom Water.
Thank you.
One other thing you might just add about using the tower, one, we own it, and there's a lot of architecture within the city, including the design of City Hall and you know, uh, Walgreens and state buildings. Um, there's a multitude of buildings that, um, under that design standard. So it's a recognizable design for the city of Tom Water. So um, in addition to the, where we started building, that the city owns.
I guess I'm just sorry that we're so identified by a building, uh, and buildings. I mean, handmade things instead of some of the natural net, nature, natural things that attract people to this area. I don't think people come because of buildings. But anyway, we, we've been through all that. You all know, uh, you know, I wasn't excited to begin with. I'm not excited now, but I'm happy we have a new one. Kind of like what Councilmember Dahlhoff said, and, um, and, oh, I'm not going to move away or anything. It's fine, fine to have that as a logo.
Councilmember old Housever.
Thanks. Well, Joe and I, for one, am relieved to hear that you're not moving away anytime soon. Um, uh, I'd be awful lonely if you left.
Yeah, you would, you would.
I, I think I'm, I think what I said last time when we talked about this is I probably would, would uh, guesstimate to be the least sort of visually, um, I know, I'm, I'm not like a, like a visual person. I, I, you know, so long as it says the word tumwater on it, you know, I will identify with that and understand it. Um, I'm not visually like inclined to the visual arts by, by nature. Um, but I, I agree with sort of the general sentiment. You know, I, I think it is time, it is time to to, uh, hit refresh on the, on the page to kind of bring us forward. And I, I like that we're recognizing history with the logo and recognizing, um, the, the river as well. I, um, I, I think that this is leaps and bounds ahead of, of where we were with sort of version one with the themes. I'm excited to see the next steps. And I get, I guess my only question would be if, you know, the former mayor will have to get a new incredibly bright colored jacket with a logo on the chest with the new logo. Um, and if he'll be sporting that while, while picking up trash next to five for his community service work that he does every Sunday. But so, yeah, may, maybe, maybe he'll keep the old logo on one side and then get the new one embroidered on the other side of his jacket. We'll, we'll have to ask.
It sounds like we're doing a big hat order, so maybe we could get him a hat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
Well, I appreciate everybody's, uh, input, feedback, your thoughts and support. You know, we're going to roll this out, uh, slowly, low hanging fruit. Um, but definitely get that hat order in. And, um, I appreciate you all. These are, these are always, uh, interesting conversations when there's logos. Um,
Are all the hats the same style?
You know what? You can get any hat you want. And if you would wear a hat with the new logo, I'll, I'll bring the catalog over for you.
Can we do ponchos or like a wrap?
I didn't know if they were all bill caps or whatever.
What about the hats that have the propeller on the top that you can flick and it'll spin around? That's the kind that I wear.
And then once you put the beverage on the side?
Yeah, those are good. I mean, it's brewing themed, right? If you got the beverages on the hat.
Yeah.
That's on point. This is devolving quickly.
It's too late in the meeting for this conversation, but clearly you're all really engaged. So I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, uh, and thank you for, uh, helping me with my PowerPoint, screen share, two-screen technology. Um, nice way to open, close the day, but thank you all very much.
Thanks, Anne, for all your work on this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Anne, very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the graphic artist did a really good job and probably got really tired of her saying, oh, no, you need changes. And, oh, no, you need to change that. And, oh, we don't like that. So, you know, it takes a long time to get there. Councilmember Bobby, did you have something?
Yes, Mayor, this does not have anything to do with the discussion right now, but, uh, just want to put this out here. My, um, my devices was fully charged when we started this meeting. Now I have 10% which means it's going to die. So what I'm getting at is we need new devices that is more modern that won't run down after two hours of usage.
We, you know, we will, I'll check with our IT team because I know they've been working on the replacement schedule. I think in the, in the new budget, you have, you have two options of both a, a Mac option and a non-Mac option. And so let me check with them and see sort of the schedule for when that is happening.
I was told April when I emailed.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be awesome if it was sooner, but I doubt it because they're doing a lot of work.
The other way we can deal with that is just by having shorter meetings.
Sure.
Or plug it in before the meeting.
It was fully charged when we started, a hundred percent.
Okay.
I've forgotten that before.
Anything else? So, so this, the logo will start getting rolled up this week. Uh, it's not, this is the first public presentation of it. So now we, we will start moving forward. And it'll roll out as we need to replace things. We're not going to come through and blanket uh, change out everything. Just that would just be an astronomical cost. So as things renew, so you're going to probably see both for a while. And then, um, phase out the other one as quickly as we can. Right? Is there anything else for this evening? All right, with that, uh, we are adjourned and I will, we will see everyone next week. So thank you, everyone.